Thank you, Max.
Congratulations, Max.
We move to the next resolution, 2023-16, supporting raised grant application for Hamtramck Adams.
I make the motion.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, we have Ruben from our CED here. Ruben is a volunteer with our CED. He's working on his graduate degree and originally came to us to help with that degree, and we put him right to work. He's helping out Carolyn and has proven himself very instrumental in a lot of things that are happening here. The grant that he's here to talk about today has potential for a lot of good stuff. I'm not going to steal his thunder, but he can go ahead and explain it.
Great.
Congratulations, Max, and thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing me to be here. I am very excited to present more good news, which is free money. Basically, the Department of Transportation has a very big no-match grant that will fund surface transportation that projects don't often get funded. This is a huge opportunity for the city of Hamtramck. We debated in the CED and along with the DPS and our grant writer about what projects might fit for this, and we came upon alleys as a key project that's needed in the city. There's a lot of community support for this. We have heard from many, many residents over the years about the need for alleys to be repaired. They also are a key opportunity to reduce the flooding that happens every couple of years here in Hamtramck because alleys actually represent a huge amount of surface area in the city. So if we make those alleys contain the stormwater better instead of sending it directly into the sewer, you actually get fewer backups. So what we're proposing is to use, to apply to this grant to redo the alleys and redo the parking lot near Yemen's, or on Yemen's, I might correct. The surface parking lot on Yemen Street with porous, sustainable pavement. We, at minimum, this grant is $5 million. So we would use this $5 million or more, depending on how our engineers assess what alleys need to be done, to redo basically as many alleys as we can get. There's a lot of community support for this. We've already gotten letters of support from the Union American Chamber of Commerce, the DDA, the Hamtramck Community Initiative, and Hamtramck Mutual Aid. This is also a priority that the City Council stated when it passed the resolution in 2022 during the summer, saying that alley repaving was a priority. It's also in our master plan to repave with porous pavement. This is kind of a very clear-cut issue. It addresses a lot of different issues.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any more discussion about this?
That would solve a few problems for us if it works. I hope, we're hoping.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Chaudry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, the resolution 2023-16 approved.
Thank you. Next one is Resolution 2023-17, authorization to approve first reading of Kniff rezoning amendment to the Hamtramck zoning map.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, if I could humbly ask one of our council members to make a resolution to alter this resolution. It appears we omitted one address from the bunch accidentally, and Ms. Faulkner brought it to our attention. It is going to be 2328 Kniff. If someone could just slide that in there.
I'll make a motion to amend to add 2323.
2328.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Faulkner?
Thank you. Hi, Mayor.
Can we vote on that?
Yeah, I think it's clear to vote on that one.
Can we vote on it?
We voted on it.
All approved?
Yep.
Thank you. Can you also please just give me the address that we're adding?
2328 Kniff.
Okay, thank you.
Good to go? Okay. Hello, so good to be here. So just to give you some history, CED proposed this rezoning to the Planning Commission back in September of last year. It is the south side of Kniff between, I'm sorry, Joseph Campo and Nangle Avenue. There are quite a few sections in that section that are actually still zoned residential. So all of the buildings are actually commercial and institutional that we're proposing to rezonate. They're operating as institutional and commercial businesses. There are no residences in those addresses that are listed, but even if there were residences, C2 is mixed-use and allows both residential and commercial. So it's quite a flexible district. The definition of C2 is included in the report, and it's very broad. Can you pull up the report, page two, in the PDF? Just so I can put it up in full. But while that's going up, the reason is because there are challenging opening businesses there. For example, if you get a new property owner or someone is leasing one of these commercial-looking buildings, they come to the building department or CED to get a certificate of occupancy, and they find out that the zoning is, for some reason, residential, even though it's a clearly commercial building. It can slow down them getting a C of O by four or five months. So they might be in a lease for five months, have to jump through all these hoops before they can actually open their business. I don't actually know, so actually, if you could zoom in right there to that map. So all of the yellow is zoned residential. It includes a gas station, it includes a market, it includes a whole bunch of things that are not residential, but they're zoned residential. So people will try to lease it out or buy it, and then they're very delayed because it's zoned residential. I don't know how that happened, but we're just basically trying to fix that. So we did a presentation to the Planning Commission in September, then we held a public hearing, which is required by law, at the Planning Commission level. It was published in the paper. One person did come in support of it. And basically, this is the first hearing. We'd have to come back here for a final vote on this, but in the meantime, just want to see if there were any questions. Nope?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
So we vote on the amended resolution?
I need a first and a motion and a second on the votes.
Didn't they already do motion and second originally?
I thought it like stacks and unstacks.
Yeah.
They, they motioned and seconded, and then amended. Now we need a motion to vote on the amended resolution.
Okay, like to make the motion as amended as it is.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Ready to vote?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Chaudry?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, amended resolution 2023-17 has been approved.
Thank you. Move to the next one, Resolution 2023-18, approving the ballot language for proposed amendment of the Hamtramck City Charter to change Section 9-18C, City Manager Appointment Qualifications Compensation.
Offer.
Second.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Okay, so this is the thing brought to my attention a long time ago. So residents back in here today, there is a some, why not? We got lots of qualified, educated people around here not coming to the politics. There is a couple of reasons. One reason, I'm going to say the next one. So they're wasting their time, not getting compensated correctly, not getting respectfully, experience gathering, all those things. And basically, this resolution came to the couple of, last month, couple of employees threat coming to us, who are all going to resign, or we're going to resign tomorrow, we're going to go together. So that case, we do have in the elected body here, highly qualified, to take over the job in case somebody just resigned right now. I'm going to go for the temporary or for the moment or for permanently try to help the Hamtramck City they cannot help because of this provision. So, so due to that, make a more Hamtramck building, city building appropriate and more secret, more diverse, more community-wise. That is the resolution. We brought it. It is the charter amendment. It goes to the election, I believe is going August election, first week. And if we approve today, it's going the ballot and give the opportunity to the residents to think about it and vote for yes or no. So that's why we have some option, still we have, we can take care of this one.
Thank you. Any more discussion on this?
Okay.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilwoman Jakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Chaudry?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2318 approved.
Okay, thank you. Next one is Resolution 2023-19, approving the ballot language for proposed amendment of the Hamtramck City Charter to change Section 7-01A, Council Compensation, Compensation, and Section 9-03, Compensation of the Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem.
I'd like to offer.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Chair, you want me to start first, if anybody?
Yeah, it seems like you're the first one.
Okay. Again, a long time ago, our Honorable Mayor Pro Tem, Dr. Gadjali, and here, when City need help, we reduce our salary together a long time ago. I was here. Also, after those days, and right now, economy is real high, all those prices, and somewhere, any discussion come if somebody say how much you get from the City Council. When I said the really amount embarrassed to me in that situation. It is not only the money, it is the time and respect also. And the other hand, again, there is lots of young folks is not coming to the election because of compensation, not getting paid correctly, not getting talent. It's very clear. The other hand, if surrounding area, you go the, all the city, this is only the city has that kinds of money City Council getting. So before yesterday, I opened the radio, I'm coming from my work, and I'm hearing Detroit City Council this week, or today, tonight, I mean, it's today, already been happened, 79 to getting $125,000. Understand this full-time job. So people thinking about this, lots of community members also request me to, or agree with me to increase this one. Who did not increase as a crazy, who did increase, there is reasonable. So this is not going across six council members and mayor. It is not going across even 80,000. Okay?
Yes.
So all together. So I didn't see any criticize for this one, is the reasonable, and try to bring the educated young folks to run the election, at least they understand, they have something is getting, they can go college, and more talent, people come, more good idea come, more city will be benefited. That is my intention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Um, I'll try and keep this one short, like shorter than I normally do. And so Councilman Hassan and I actually have talked about this quite a bit, and we disagree on certain points of this, but a lot of what he says does hold weight. Whenever I'm at like Semcog or something like that, and people are like, well, how much do you get? And I tell them, and they're like, what? Like, that's it? And so it is that shock factor, and then that does come in when you're talking about the residents are requesting higher qualifications for candidates, they're asking for a higher time commitment from candidates and elected officials are asked, like residents are asking for a lot. And that's okay, because that is the job that we signed up to do, and every single one of us here signed up for it at the pay rate that is currently there. And so one thing that I do want to request of my council, fellow council members, is to just amend this language slightly, to reflect that it would be enforced starting January 1, 2024, which would be the start of the next term with the people who are elected with the upcoming council elections. So I don't know if I need to make a motion for that to start discussing it, discussing that specific point, but.
Mr. Chair, I have a, no, that's good. No, there's a clarification. This is, it's not going to be final approval today.
Correct.
If it is August, we still don't know it's going to be approved or not from the residents. So we can wait, I agree with my councilwoman, we can wait. If it is come to the August election approval, after that, any council meeting, we're going to make the resolution. It will affect from January 2024. That's all. So we want to see first for the residents. That's my idea.
If it passes through the residents of Hamtramck, I mean, citizens of Hamtramck, then we will make an amendment to this resolution.
Or bring the resolution.
Or bring this resolution back and make an amendment.
No, no, that's not how it works. The wording that's on the resolution you passed tonight will be the wording that's going to be on the ballot.
Yes.
So if you want to amend it to add the start of the January 1.
Even if this goes on the ballot as is and is approved, you could always come back as a council and say, we want this to start here, they're just taking less money.
Yeah, after the election.
No, it's not.
So there's nothing in this wording that says when it starts like immediately.
Immediately, but that doesn't mean they can't.
But that's still, it's still charter wording.
Nothing's forcing them to take 9,000 as opposed to if they decide to take less. I mean, the charter isn't mandating that they cash a check, so.
Imagine somebody comes back in a couple of years, says, I never got my money that it was passed in the ballot. Like, I rather, I think it'd be more, it makes sense if it was in the language.
I think Madam Park is right. You know, that's.
What do you think?
I think Rena is right, actually.
Okay, so let's go start.
I'll make the motion to amend the language.
Somebody come back and claim that it's going to be in the resolution.
I'll make a motion to amend the language to include an effective date of January 1, 2024.
Just cleaner.
Second.
You're ready to vote.
It's more cleaner.
The beginning of the ballot.
That was for Resolution 23-19.
Correct.
And I need a second, please?
I do.
Second, did? Okay. Do you want to discuss, or you want to vote on that?
No, both of them.
Just vote on it. Uh, Chaudry?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I apologize, Councilman Chaudry.
It's fine.
Yes, that was?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jakowski?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, amendment to 23-19 approved. And now, if you want to discuss something different you'd like to, that's fine, or we can just go ahead and motion to pass the amended resolution.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make the motion as amended.
Second. Second. Okay. Any more discussion?
Well, I'm not going to wait until 2024 for the raise. I just got $7 increase in my pay rate, so I'm fine.
Congratulations.
All right, so.
We need to vote on.
Yeah, we can do it and vote now, on the amended resolution.
Yes. Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Chaudry?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Mr. Mayor, amended resolution 23-19 approved.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I know you guys already voted on this, but I just wanted to say that, I mean, it's $73,000, which is less than some of our positions in City Hall in total.
Any comment?
I know how much work council puts into this. The council subcommittee alone on ordinances spends hours and hours on end of their own time going through things, not to mention all the other subcommittees, and quite frequently, council's taken off work to come here. So I don't think it's going to make us or break us.
Thank you. Thank you. Next one is Resolution 2023-20, approving the ballot language for proposed amendments of the Hamtramck City Charter to remove Section 4-04, council members who run for mayor, and Section 4-05, mayor who runs for council.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make the motion.
Any support?
Second.
Second.
All right.
Okay, again, Mr. Chair. So this charter previously was all the history I know, what's happened, why that was, why made it. So it was the, two groups was fighting in Hamtramck each other, and that's why this charter was like that kinds of issue. So right now, we don't have any issue. Anybody want to run? We have to resign. We don't have to resign. Still, I'm council, I'm council, but I can run for mayor if I don't get elected. I'm going to lose my council seat and mayor seat, very clear. Don't conflict that one. Then again, mayor running and council, sometimes, oh, too much responsibility, or I don't have too much power, council has the power. My vote does not work sometimes, council vote always work, so they can run. There's lots of city in Michigan, when I go to Michigan municipal league meeting, I see that, oh, I was the mayor. Now, he's the mayor and the council president. So there's the more flexibility and the more experience, more good people can stay in the, in the different position. Due to that, we have idea and we brought it. Thank you.
So what's your plan, Mr. Beaufort?
I might go and run your seat, you don't know.
So nowhere in there where council becomes clerk?
Well, guess what?
My job's safe.
Next charter amended is kind, maybe color, city clerk will be the elected official, it was the elected person, it was before.
Do I run in election?
Why, everybody are going to vote for her.
I know. Right after Ruben. Ready for vote?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jakowski?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Chaudry?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 23-20 approved.
Thank you. Last one is Resolution 2023-21, implementing a Hamtramck accessible parking program. I'll make the motion.
Second. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So this is one that has come up over the years from multiple residents. There's a few that repeatedly bring it up year after year, and there's a few ones that have been bringing it up more recently. Family members, relatives have become disabled and are facing difficulties in accessing their homes because of a few different systemic things in Hamtramck. So especially when there's like larger events and stuff like that with people from out of town coming in, we know that we have a parking shortage, and for our disabled residents, this is a very easy fix to make sure that they're still able to access their homes without incredible difficulty, having to walk across town or something like that when they don't have the ability to do so. So if anyone has questions, I would be happy to clarify, but I think most of you I've spoken to about this already, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
It is a good idea, and actually, it's happened to my neighborhood also. But one, one thing is a little bothering me. Mr. Marcel brought to the, like, one of the logic. If somebody handicap and we assign that parking for that person, that person go for one month or one with some other city or vacation, that area spot will be still empty. There is anything we can do for that? That is the, that is my thing.
Mr. Mayor, I, so you're saying if someone goes on vacation, that that spot would essentially be left vacant while they were gone?
Yeah.
I don't know, we can brainstorm some ideas to see what we can do. We could maybe put a bag over the sign for a week. I mean, that's a possibility.
Yeah, yeah.
But we, we still got a lot of details to work out in this because historically, we haven't done much with this because we knew we couldn't assign regular handicap spots to anyone specifically, so we're looking at doing a, basically, a whole different system. It's not even going to be handicap. It'll, it'll be called something different, and it's not even going to look like a handicap sign, but it's going to be for disabled residents, so that there's no question that it is specifically for that house. And we hope to actually put some enforcement in there as well, so that if someone else park in there, we can also write them a ticket.
Okay, so, yeah, good idea. Yeah, we can approve today and find out the, what you say, and we can bring amendment. But, yeah, yeah, this is, this was the good. Then also, right now, they're calling police, hey, it is my sign, somebody parked with the handicap, and then we're not going to have, then we're, police call either.
It's, it's been driving the PD.
I know, I know, I saw that. It's my street.
They, they want to do something, but they, they can't.
They can't. Michigan street law.
So I have a little concern. So are we saying that anyone else have a handicap sign and they can go park?
Yeah, right there.
Right now? But what if that person is very disabled and she needed that parking spot?
Disable is disabled.
And wait, one second, I have elderly aunt that, Aunt Fleming, she's 78 years old. She, her parking spot get taken by the neighbor, handicapped.
That's what we're trying to think.
Yeah, some are trying.
Are we trying to, this, resolve that problem?
Yes, specifically to that, that lady.
Thank you, okay.
Okay.
All right, can go out and vote.
Councilman Chaudry?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jakowski?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 23-21 approved.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have one question. Mr. Attorney?
Yeah.
I got emergency text messages coming from my workplace. If I go right now, it's still corona, right?
No.
No.
Okay.
But we're, we're done.
Make reports fast.
Every resolution is through.
Yeah, we're done.
So we have the report, we'll make it short. So my report that, you know.
Yeah, I don't think we need to.
You can leave if you need to.
Yeah.
No, it's okay, go ahead, finish up the report.
Yeah, so, so basically, not much happened over the past two weeks. I attended one event last Sunday in St. Florian Church for the welcoming ceremony for the new pastor. His name is Thomas Pichak, if I said it right. It was a good event, met a lot of people there, including some of the previous elected officials, like the treasurer. He, he used to be elected, I met him there too, and we talked about how the clerk position and the treasurer used to be elected officials. Yeah, so it was a good event there, I enjoyed it. Same day, I gave a lecture in the West Ghett about some common GI disorders in our community. And not much happened over the past two weeks. There will be so many events in the coming weeks, so. As all for my report, I just want to thank everyone for coming today. And I would congratulate Max again for his new appointment, and we hope that we work together as a team, as we have been doing since you took the office. And hopefully, we can do a lot of great things for our city, for our residents. And I want to thank everybody who applied for the position. Some of them were very good, fine candidate, including my friend Kamar Rahman, who is, I thank him also for serving in the Housing Committee and Housing Commission, and for running a couple of times for the mayor. He knows also so much about our city, and he cares about our community. I thanked him for applying, and he made it to the top three candidates, so that's a great accomplishment as well. Also, the third person, Mohammed Maheddeen, he's a good guy who also have so many good qualities of leadership. I want to, I wish them the best of luck in the future, and I want to thank them again for taking the initiative to apply for this position. And I want to thank them again for taking the initiative to apply for this position. And again, congratulations, Max, and we hope to work together in the future. And I want to thank the city council for giving you the trust and the vote tonight. So that's all for my report. Mr. Mayor, if you have anything.
Thank you. So one more, I forget that time. So again, recently, me and Mr. Sumari came to the city hall a couple of time, at different time. So we saw some directors or salary employees. Sometimes come late, no issue. But we are requesting the everybody. So we don't want to, we lose the ethic. We don't want to, we lose the honesty. So, and we don't want residents to come, tell us, I was there, I cannot find so and so. So I want to tell Mr. Manager, please look at that kind of situation. We want to make sure we're not losing our control. Everybody come on time. I understand most, some of the time, we cannot come on time. And we call manager. Manager will take care of that situation. It's everybody part of the life and job. The other hand, Mr. Kamal Rahman make one good point. He did excellent interview. So I'll go there, I'll keep the city hall open Friday back, bring the back operation. With the COVID-19, we had the issue. That's why we cut Friday. I want to, Max Cabrino to think about it. So can we bring it back again? Same employee is getting paid five days. So I want you to think about that, I want to. Some of the residents complain?
We can look at some options. There's also other options and maybe we're open 10 hours in four days.
Okay, so here is the one. I tried to bring from his mouth and he's already came in. I don't want to give free. So you're giving me for the 10 hours, I'm all set. So right now, after, very soon, I'm gonna be assigned for four crochet for the, for the 40 hours. So thank you. And right when you thought and you give the answer, what I was looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Any city council wants to say?
Mr. Mayor? I have a very short one. So something that came out of the pandemic was Plague Doctor Trashman. And I was able to speak to the plague doctor earlier today. And the Hamtown Trashies are going to resume the dispersed cleanups. And so if anyone is interested in being involved with the Hamtown Trashies, there is a Facebook group. But there's also like text messaging and stuff like that that can help if you need help figuring out what it is. But basically, it's you wake up in the morning. If you have 20 extra minutes, you go clean a block. And you put it in your own garbage can and it goes out with your trash at the end of the week. You can post on Facebook or something if you did it. And it just helps encourage other people to remember that we all have that responsibility for our neighborhood. I know trash is a very common topic and we all can actually address that ourselves. And if we're all picking up a bag of garbage a week, then the city is going to be much, much, much cleaner than it ever has been before. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
First of all, I want to begin with our condolences and prayer and thoughts to the, also the Turkish and prayer, Syria earthquake that devastated the entire country. And I cannot watch anymore on TV news what a horrific week it's brought to the Turkish and Syria. I hope there are more survivors and they get all the aids they need, all the help they need from the world. You know, Bangladesh has sent aids to their country. United States has sent aid to their country. I hope you keep them in your prayer. More survivor come out. You know, it's, it's a one thing to another. Now, we just had a COVID-19 pandemic and now we, you know, facing another crisis in the world. And also, I wanted to send prayer to the MSU. You know, this shooting violence kept rising, down badness. That's, I have four kids, you know, one in high school. And it just, and then I kept getting messages from this Detroit Public School, goes to downtown King School, that, you know, there's a continuous threat to the school. And it's, it's a terrible thing to think and keep working, you know, while you're getting those messages. God help us get through stuff like that. I wanted to, I wanted to thank our city attorney, deputy city manager, Molly Lookman, for your lot of effort and times to conduct the city manager's search. It did a lot of works. As well as my colleagues, all of us did a lot of works, including Mayor Amr Ali. It was an easy process. We have excellent candidates, but we found the best that had the most experience. And I wouldn't say any more than that. The experience that counts, you know, who has been in the city for a long time, almost two decades. I'd like to request our city manager that, the gentleman and Dr. Lishah here that they want a resolution. I meant to send you an email before for today's meeting. I forgot this, got busy with the tax season. So if you could put it in your note, the next council meeting to have a resolutions, we are against mandatory aid to Israel. Please. And I want to thank everybody for being here and everybody's thoughts and concern about everything is appreciated. We take this concern and comments highly. And we like those comments and to understand better. Thank you so much. God bless you.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'd like to thank Max Cabrino. Congratulations, city manager, city of Hamtramck. We're gonna see this year's summertime. Please, you need to work with the code enforcement, make the city clean. That's we're gonna see Max Cabrino, the city manager, how they work this year. We're gonna start this year. Code enforcement, very important. Code enforcement like a safety. And don't forget speed home. Don't forget speed home is a safety. And code enforcement, same the safety. Isn't that different? And thank you for everyone to come to the meeting today.
Thank you, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Chadri, for reminding us about the earthquake in Syrian city. Actually, seven Yemenis have been killed in there. They are students mostly. So our deep skepticism to the Turkish and Syrian people. And we hope it doesn't happen again. And thank you so much for coming.
Oh, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
This is your second visit.
Really appreciate the resolution. You know, I just want to say one sentence. You know what it's...
I don't think it's...
I thought we were finished.
So thank you, everyone, and we move to the, I see the controller already give three or four. Do you have anything else?
Yeah, you want to add here?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So Max, your turn now.
So I just wanted, just a couple of quick things. Councilman, your speed humps you just mentioned. So one of the things we want to do with the new road resurfacing is just put the speed humps right in. So already planning on that, so we should see some more this summer. Also, at Kenneth and Joseph Campo, we're aware there's that water main break. We've been having all kinds of intermittent outbreaks just because of it. Trying to turn things off and on to get it to happen. So we're likely gonna see a bunch more in the next couple of days. We will do our best to keep you updated on social media. We don't really know when it's gonna happen or not yet, so best we can do is social media for now. So that's it. Thank you.
I want to piggyback on the Max's city manager. Just want to announce that the court has an amnesty program until May 31st. Please take, avail yourself of that. You'll get significant discounts on payments of any of your tickets in the past that might have late fees and penalties. You can get those wiped out and pay a reduced amount. It'll really help the city. It'll really help the court to clear up some of our backlogs. And it'll help you to clear up your tickets. So I remember when I was 19, I had a number of tickets and I thought I owed, I was telling Max, I owed like $1,200 of parking tickets, I thought. Something like that, yeah. When I went to Wayne State and it was pretty bad. And I was in trouble with my dad. I worked really hard at Circuit City and I made that $1,200. And I went to the 36th District Court to pay it. And I stood in a long line and somebody walked up to me and said, it's amnesty day. You only have to pay $300. So I had $900 and there was no happier 19-year-old in the world. Do the same thing, come pay your tickets and you'll be happy.
Thank you. Uh, thank you. One more to, back to the public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have Mutah Harfada from the American Bank.
Hello, everyone. I'm Mutah Harfada, Secretary General of the American Bank. On behalf of the American Bank and for the Directors, Advisory Board and General Assembly, would like to congratulate Mr. Max Cabrino for his appointment to the city manager. I'm sure he will do a great gap as he did in the past. We worked on some issues before and we will continue to do so in the future. So congratulations again and thanks to everyone who attend tonight and to the city council, mayor and all the committees. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Nasser Hussain?
Yes, regarding the parking, the disabled parking, I ask you to do more research because I tried to find online any city that design exclusive spots for the residents. I couldn't find any. And I also found out if somebody had a garage, they're not entitled to a disabled spot. They could easily park in the garage. And just to avoid any lawsuits, if you prevent disabled people from parking, you know, there's a DPA. They're very strict, you can't just do the sign for parking. Another person, they can't park there or something. And that's it. And for the Hamtown Trashies, I would recommend, give them warning signs. You will not to buy their effort. And if they just place the warnings, they don't have to do nothing. People will clean up themselves. This is the way to do it.
Lynn Bladie? It's only, did you want, it's only on agenda items that we already cast?
That's okay. Hello, good mayor and council. I just wanted to congratulate Max again on his appointment to city manager. And I do want to reflect that it's really great that there were so many applicants. That's something I championed at the beginning of the search to make sure that having a lot of applicants really helps the people making the decision know that they're choosing the best qualified candidate. So I do thank everyone that did apply. Putting your name out there can be scary, especially when it's published in the newspaper. And I really believe that the process worked well and the council chose the best candidate for the position. So congratulations, Max. And another comment, I didn't get to talk about the handicap parking because I ran out of time in the first part. But I do want to make sure that as this process is looked at, that residents who need access to their homes and can't walk long distances, there's some sort of resolution connecting that spot to specific residents. And I had some conversations, I debated with Councilman Jakowski about it. I have someone in my family that has special needs and if there was no parking in front of my house, there's no way he could, he could walk multiple houses to my house. But she made really good points that that is the situation for people who live there every single day. And so if my family members use their handicap spot to park in someone else's spot and they came home, then they wouldn't be able to access their own home. And so I thank you, Councilwoman Jakowski, for helping me understand the nature of this challenge. And I look forward to seeing how it's addressed moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, that is all for public comment.
Thank you. Move to adjourn now. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's 9:06 PM.